Mr. Chairman, that is to design the water and sewer utilities for the North Federal Reconstruction. HDR has been contracted for that design, as well as the stormwater, or mending that also to include street lighting as well.
Okay, that's all I have.
All right, and, um, Courtney, I was just gonna ask for our next session, can we have that? Last year you were doing that sheet when we had out-of-budget items that explained what they were, do you remember that?
Yes, could I explain that?
Yeah, that's a good point.
Um, we usually do that every two weeks, I know you have the spreadsheet you're talking about, we usually do that, but when we get so close, we stop doing those transfers, and there just gets to be so many.
I see.
So we quit doing the transfers on those, on, like, from one line on him to another, but, um, lawyer was also gone, so I didn't get that sheet done this time.
Okay, and, but all that'll be in the budget amendment?
It will be.
Okay, we can just look at it then, that's great, okay. Anything else? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, that passes, anything else, Stephen?
Oh, Your Honor, just the, uh, we will have our meeting the last Tuesday of the month that I put my weekly reports, that would mean that the Finance Committee would be at 5:45, unless you want to try to do that at a different time.
Till 5:45 on the last Tuesday?
Last Tuesday of the month, because we're gonna meet at 6:00, that's just a real quick meeting, because we just have to prove the bills.
Does that work for both of you?
Are we gonna get, you'll notify us on that?
Yeah, so it'll be the fourth Tuesday of the month, I don't know exactly what date that is.
The 23rd, okay.
Yeah.
Works for me.
All right. We will...
Well, it's the fifth Tuesday.
The fifth Tuesday, oh, is that still the 23rd then? No?
No, that's the 30th.
We get overtime on the fifth Tuesday.
The 30th is the fifth Tuesday? Okay, so the 30th is...
Yeah, the 30th.
Okay, so the 30th, here, 5:45.
Yep.
I think that works for me, so...
It works.
Great.
All right, if there's no other business, meeting adjourned.
I now call the, uh, June 2nd, 2015 Regular Meeting of the Riverton City Council to order at, uh, 7:00 PM. Would Councilmember Canaan please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, and if we could remain standing after that, Councilmember Fabian will offer an invocation.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our Heavenly Father, we thank you for the opportunity to meet together tonight, Lord, we ask that you would help us to better understand the ways that we can improve our city, Lord, and assist our constituents, and thank you for each person who's come here tonight to, uh, share their opinion on the city manners, and ask that you will just help our decisions be wise and thoughtful.
Amen.
Would the city clerk please conduct the roll call?
Yes, Your Honor, Councilman Martin Canaan?
Here.
Councilman Jonathan Fabian?
Here.
Councilman Lee Martinez?
Here.
Councilman Kyle Larson?
Here.
Councilmember Holly Gibbon?
Here.
Mayor John Lars Baker?
Thank you, the chair would entertain a motion to excuse Councilmember Mike Bailey from tonight's meeting.
Motion to excuse Mike Bailey?
Been moved and seconded, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion passed. I declare that we have a quorum present, chair would entertain a motion for the approval of the agenda.
Move to approve the agenda?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda. Any discussion to that, or amendments that we need to make? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Mayor votes aye, motion passes. Communication from the floor, citizens' comments? Anyone in the audience wishing to address the council regarding an item that is already on the agenda will be given an opportunity to speak later on. I would appreciate those individuals who wish to address the council at this time to approach the podium and identify yourselves for the record. Okay. Consent agenda, would the city clerk please read the consent agenda, items by title only?
Yes, Your Honor, approval of the minutes, May 19th, 2015 Regular Council Meeting, approval of the minutes, June 2nd, 2015 Finance Committee Meeting, approval of Finance Committee Recommendations for June 2nd, 2015, and the city clerk's office received an open container permit application from First Interstate Bank, July 23rd, 2015, for a company barbecue at Sunset Park from 5:00 PM to 9:00 PM.
Thank you, are there any other items in your discussion? Mr. Fabian?
It's the recommendation of the Finance Committee for claims to be paid in the amount of $130,893.40, and for checks for payroll and liabilities for May 15th, 2015, in the amount of $357,269.50, for a total of $488,162.90.
Thank you. The chair would entertain a motion for the approval of the consent agenda.
Your Honor, I move that we approve the consent agenda.
It is written.
Mr. Martinez?
Second.
Second by Mr. Larson, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Mayor votes aye, and the motion passes. Mayor's proclamation about Police Department Baseball Night. Greetings, as mayor of the city of Riverton, I hereby declare Thursday, June 4th, 2015 to be Baseball Night in Riverton, sponsored by the Riverton Police Department. The purpose of this proclamation is to encourage all residents of Riverton to go out Thursday evening, June 4th, and enjoy a baseball game involving the youth of our community. Baseball is an all-American game, and has served our national pastime for more than a century. A game will be played at the Bay Brith Field, starting at 6:00 PM on Thursday. Bay Brith Baseball was founded in the United States in 1947, that field is located at the corner of Sunset and Majors. The Riverton Police Department Horse Mounted Unit will present the colors, and I'm honored to throw out the ceremonial first pitch of that game. A game will also be played at the American Legion Field, starting at 7:00 PM. American Legion Baseball is hosted by the National, at the national level, by the veterans organization known as the American Legion. They've been sponsoring baseball in America since 1925. That field is located a block west of the hospital. The Riverton Police Department Horse Mounted Unit will again present the colors, and the ceremonial first pitch will be thrown out by the current Riverton Police Department Officer Tyler Larson, who is an alumnus of the Riverton Raiders Legion baseball team. I understand that there's also going to be a Little League game at 5:30 that night, so this is gonna be the first, the first night for baseball in Riverton this summer. So these games are open to the public and are free, there are concessions for sale at each field. So I encourage all members of our citizens to come out, enjoy some baseball, and visit with other members of our community. The next item of business is the Roasted Bean and Cuisine Request for Additional Square Footage of the Serving Area. Could we have the city clerk's report?
Yes, Your Honor, the city clerk's office received a request from Inga and Jacob J. Tyra, doing business as Roasted Bean and Cuisine, and I believe they're present tonight, so if you have any questions. They requested, or made a request to the council to increase their serving area at the Roasted Bean and Cuisine by 472 square feet, and it would be an outdoor serving area. The Community Development Department has approved the additional construction contingent upon council's approval, and a site plan is also being included, so it is staff's recommendation to approve the, uh, request for an additional outside serving area of 472 square feet.
Thank you. The chair would entertain a motion.
Your Honor, I would move to approve the request for additional square footage for the serving area.
Second. It's been moved and seconded, is there any discussion?
Your Honor?
Go ahead.
Just to be clear, this is, this is additional, or is this changing it from the original to this location?
Your Honor, it's my understanding, but, again, the applicants are here, it's my understanding that's an additional 472 square feet.
Okay, thank you.
So, just for my clarification, this takes up part of the parking lot, correct? Okay, thank you. Ready for motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye, motion passes. The next item is the replat of lots 5 through 11, west of Hill Street and east of Wolf Creek Drive, Block 7, Wyoming Community Development Authority Petitioner. Could we get a report from the Community Development Director, please?
Yes, Your Honor, microphone isn't working over there, so I'll try it here. I passed out a, uh, colored map of the area, and I think it'll be a little easier to understand. What we're talking about is the area that is west of Hill Street and east of Wolf Creek Drive, and east of Dickinson Avenue, and west of Wolf Creek Drive. There are two blocks, Block 6 and Block 7, and this area was originally platted in 2000, then replatted in 2005, and then an amended replat in 2006 to correct the ownership and signatures. The property was zoned at that time Residential B, which allows for single-family residential use up to multiple-family dwellings containing not more than six units, so a sixplex would be allowed if there is enough area. It was rezoned from Residential Planned Unit Development, which is a PUD, in August of 2006. The petitioner, WCDA, is requesting this replat to create two lots from seven existing lots in Block 7, and, um, two lots from the existing 14 lots in Block 6, so you can probably see that on your map. This replat is, uh, it would then accommodate two, uh, sixplex on each one of those four newly-created lots. This, um, use is is allowed as it is currently zoned through the requirements of Residential B, so a zoning change is not required. This replat then is not, not to determine if this is the best use of the property, since that is looked at during zoning or rezoning this property, and the replat of this property meets all the requirements for that use. And as I said, the project would consist of the construction of two sixplex multifamily, uh, housing buildings on, uh, Block 7, and two, uh, senior, multifamily senior housing buildings, uh, on Block 6, and those were for affordable, uh, to low-income families. Reviews were sent to utility companies with no conflicts received on either one of these plats. If the project moves forward, water and sewer utilities will need to be addressed, since the existing utilities were planned for all the single-family dwellings. This, uh, replat was scheduled to be reviewed by the Planning Commission in March of 2015, when the petitioner did become aware that a petition of the property owners in this area had signed and given to the city. We received the petition from 14 members of the neighborhood who were protesting any plans to change the existing lots from single-family to multifamily lots. They felt the changes would result in decreasing their property values and would lead to more crime and problems in the area. The petitioner then asked time to communicate with the property owners as to what the project involved in order to gain neighborhood support. Information at that time was sent to the property owners, and this same information is also included in your packet. The replat was then scheduled to be on April 23rd, uh, Planning Commission Agenda. One couple, during that meeting, one couple from the neighborhood that was protesting any plans to change the existing lots from single-family to larger lots that would accommodate the multifamily dwellings as presented at the April 23rd meeting, and they voiced their objection to the replat. On, um, straight, on Block 7, after discussion, the motion by the Planning Commission to recommend approval of this replat failed without any further, uh, motion. The vote at that time was three votes to recommend approval, and three against recommending approval, resulting in no recommendation. Therefore, staff, administration, and the petitioner decided that the proposed replat should be returned to the Planning Commission for a definite recommendation before going to council. The Block 6, um, replat did pass during that meeting by the Planning Commission, uh, to recommend approval. So then, on, uh, May 21st, the Planning Commission again reviewed the replat of Block 7. Five people who had signed the petition at that meeting spoke their concerns, describing current conditions and voicing fears of conditions becoming worse with more apartments in the neighborhood. After much discussion, the Planning Commission did recommend their approval of this replat also, so both replats have been recommended for approval from the Planning Commission. Any other questions?
Mr. Larson?
What was the change in Block 6 that allowed it to go forward?
Uh, one of the council people just actually felt that they had voted erroneously on the first one and voted, uh, to recommend approval on the second one.
So there was no change in, uh, other than, in the vote?
Other than the vote, that is correct, that is correct. One of them does, um, call for multifamily senior housing in Block 6, and the other one does call for just multifamily housing.
Thank you. Uh, and we have to pa, it takes two motions to do this, one, one for Block 6, one for Block 7?
Yes, Your Honor, and we do have people in the audience I know that would like to speak on both sides of this.
Okay. Well, I would entertain a motion, uh, for replats of Lot 5 through 11 on Block 7. That's the, that's the first section.
Your Honor, I'll make the motion to approve replat of Lots 5 through 11, Block 7, College View Development.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, so is there any discussion you'd like to? Go ahead. State your name for us, and...
Uh, my name is Jason Bull with Blue Line Development. Blue Line is a development consulting company, and we have partnered with Wyoming Housing Network to build Wolf Creek and Copper Mountain Apartments on Block 6 and 7 in the College Hill Development. We have been awarded funding through the Wyoming Community Development Authority to build both projects. Wolf Creek Apartments is a 12-unit senior, um, development consisting of 12 one-bedroom units. Copper Mountain Apartments is a 12-unit family development consisting of eight three-bedroom units and four two-bedroom units. We've been, we've proposed these developments on a site that is Zone B Residential. The proposed developments will consist of two separate buildings containing six dwelling units per structure. According to Chapter 1732 of the Riverton Municipal Code, our proposed development is in allowable use at this location without a rezoning requirement. Our proposed developments also adhere to the City of Riverton Master Plan, which specifically summarizes our projects in Goal 2.3, to accommodate a variety of housing for a diverse and aging population, and Goal 2.4, workforce and affordable housing that fits the community. We are asking you to approve the replat as recommended by the Planning Commission. Before you do so, I'd like to address the concerns that were brought up at last month's Planning Commission meeting. At the meeting, there were voiced concerns over the density of the proposed developments in that area. With the current plat, Zone, or, uh, Lot, uh, Block 7 contains nine remaining lots. Block 6 contains 14 lots. Based on the current plat, zoning, and square footage of the lots, a developer could build duplexes on each lot without a zoning change or replat. That would equate to 46 units on both blocks. Our proposal for 12 units per block is far less intrusive than what is allowed with the current zoning and the current plat. There are also two vacant lots on the north end of Block 7. We are committed to leaving these two lots as open space. There are also concerns of the possibility of increased crime in the area. These concerns seem to be directly related to the type of housing, and more specifically, the tenants that the development will serve, and how the property will be maintained. All tenants of these developments will undergo a thorough screening process, which includes income verification, a credit check, and a criminal background check. Tenant finances and backgrounds are scrutinized much more than any market rate apartment complex. Many of these concerns at last month's Planning Commission meetings seem to be directly related to College Hill Apartments. It's our understanding that College Hill Apartments has gone through recent management changes, but we wanted to emphasize that College Hill is not our development. Our, and we will not be using the same management company. Both of our developments will be owned by the Wyoming Housing Network and managed by Northwest Real Estate Capital. Both companies are nonprofit companies and have excellent track records in Wyoming for demanding high standards of tenants, building maintenance, and building appearance. Uh, it was, it was also brought up at last month's, uh, meeting that there, there is trash in the streets and in the vacant lots encompassing our developments. This seems to be related to the fact that both blocks are nearly vacant. Once these buildings have been constructed, the properties and surrounding areas will be maintained by our property manager. Furthermore, with regard to the possibility of decreased property values, there have been several, several studies related to these types of developments, including one conducted by MIT's Center for Real Estate. MIT's, uh, MIT's study concluded that there were no significant differences between home values close to affordable developments. Other studies indicated that these developments actually increased property values, um, in the area due to significant improvements in construction costs. We currently have budgeted a total of about $4.3 million to develop, in development costs, to build Wolf Creek and Copper Mountain Apartments. I also wanted to address, uh, the current, the current taxes on the properties. As vacant land, these properties are paying about $3,000 in annual taxes. It's difficult to estimate the taxable value after construction, but with development costs of about $4.3 million, uh, the annual taxes will increase significantly. Not only, uh, not only will these projects be directly supporting workforce and affordable senior housing, according to the National Association of Home Builders, on a typical development of this size, about 29 local jobs are supported during the construction process, and about seven annually reoccurring local jobs are supported during the, while the development is owned and operated. Please let me know if you have any questions regarding our proposals, and thank you in advance for supporting affordable housing in Riverton.
Thank you, are you any questions? Go ahead, Mr. Larson.
On your senior development, are they all gonna be senior, or are there just some of them senior?
Ye, yes, sir, um, they're, with our, we've promised, um, uh, 55 and older, it's restricted to 55 and older.
Uh, 55 and older, I don't, um, I don't understand why 55 and older would require a three-bedroom apartment.
Uh, I'm sorry, sir, the, uh, Wolf Creek Apartments is all one-bedroom apartments, and that's the senior apartments. Copper Mountain Apartments is, uh, eight three-bedroom units and four two-bedroom units, and that's the family apartment.
That's, that's not senior, though.
No, that's not senior, that's family. Specifically targeted for family, yes, sir.
Thank you. Uh, the only question I might have is, do we actually have some management on site?
Yes, sir, um, Wy, Wyoming, um, Housing Network, uh, owns another property in Riverton, and it's our understanding that that person will be managing both properties.
Mr. Larson?
You know the address of that property?
It is, I haven't written it, written down, I can, I can get that information to you. I don't have it, I don't have it off the top of my head.
If it's, uh, property above, um, your gas road, I need to get his phone number. Because they don't take care of the surrounding area. Thank you.
Sir, I can, I can get that information to you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Next.
My name is Warren Olmstead. I live at 811 Wolf Creek Drive. First off, thank you. I'm not used to public speaking, but I'll do my best. My wife and I purchased our home just a little over three years ago and we were given a copy of the covenants and we were told, and it also states in the covenants, that there would be no apartments built on these lots for single-family residential homes only. The signs that have been on the corner of Wind River Drive and Hill Street have been covered since we bought the home. Nobody's tried to do anything to develop those lots or anything since we've been there. They've just overgrown with weeds. I think two years ago, somebody came in and mowed it twice. Last year, it was mowed once. I mow about 50, 60 feet away from our property line, just so that we don't have the snakes and stuff coming up. The homes that were to be built in there, and just like our homes and the other people's homes over on Dickinson, a minimum of $149.9 is what the minimum values were. As was stated earlier, we're concerned of the property values. Dickinson Avenue, I was hoping some of our neighbors from there would show up. They were at the meeting last week, but it doesn't appear that they're here this evening. Those people will be completely sandwiched in by apartment buildings. My wife and I, the lots next to us, if this goes through, we'll have apartments straight across from our front door and then our side patio door will be apartments, parking lot where vehicles will park and who knows what's going to happen there in parking lots and There's been a lot of problems up in the area with the apartments and everything. I think the police department has done a real good job at keeping things straightened out as much as they can. I know Sunday, my wife and I were outside a big part of the day before she went to work and she asked me, she said, "Are the police looking for somebody?" And I said, "It kind of looks like it because there were cars back and forth quite a bit of the day." Well, I think it was about 4:00, 4:30 that afternoon, I think they found them. Right down the street, I saw an officer when I was out at the dog kennel with my dog and an officer was trying to apprehend somebody right down the street there. Well, the officer ended up tackling the person to the ground. Well, then here come another guy walking up and the officer got him handcuffed and turned around and was telling the other guy and I'm just like, "Stay out of it." Well, the officer ended up tackling that guy too before his reinforcements showed up to help him. So they got that straightened out and I do, I think they do a good job, but there are a lot of problems up there. There's a lot of garbage, just like was stated. The trash dumpsters in those parking lots at the apartment buildings, they get so crammed full, it just heaps over the top of them. We've seen vehicles just drive over the trash before. We've picked up broken beer bottles, all kinds of stuff in the street in front of our house. We've had one or two instances where a truckload of people drive down the road, just tossing a beer bottle out the window onto the street. Well, we've got to drive our vehicles over this stuff. We've gone out many a times and swept the road. I was out at 9 o'clock over a year ago doing it one night. A guy walked by me, "What are you doing?" I said, "I'm sweeping this glass up." You know, I don't want to keep driving over this stuff. Last year, my wife and I, we were gone camping for the weekend. We come home Sunday afternoon. We've had little ornaments in the flower bed right in front of our front door. Well, here's one of them out at the end of our driveway, broke all to pieces and it was done just recently. We got home about 4 o'clock in the afternoon because, I mean, it hadn't been driven over or anything yet. So this was happening during broad daylight. Of course, I went down to a couple apartments to kind of ask if anybody had seen anything and, well, nobody's going to say, I don't think they'll say, "Yes, I did," or anything, you know. So now we've had to move everything to the backyard and we've got padlocks and everything on all three of our gates, just to keep stuff safe, you know. And we've got to worry about our safety and everything living up there, you know. We like the area and, you know, I don't want to move somewhere else. They mentioned background checks. College Hill Apartments do background checks and, I mean, I can sit there and I'm not against people living in an apartment. I lived in an apartment, we did when we first got married, over 30 years ago and I understand that, you know, some people, they have to live in apartments, but you've got to have people that are concerned and going to take care of their property and I just don't see that in the apartments up there. One thing that was mentioned earlier, Mr. Larson up there asked, "Who manages that other property on Pure Gas Road?" I don't know. I know one of our neighbors that were here last week said that they came from the apartments up behind Walmart. So I'm thinking maybe that's in the same area and they said, "We thought we were going to a better place over here," but some of the stuff they talked about with stuff broken and their house egged, I don't know if it's my place to say or not. The lady that was here last week, one of the comments she made was that they found used condoms in their backyard. You know, and these people, our kids are grown. Our kids don't live here with us now, they're both living in Colorado, but these people have got young children and, you know, they can't let their kids go out without being concerned for their safety and all this stuff, you know. I feel the covenants are in place to help protect us as homeowners, you know, because we pay mortgages, taxes, and we do, you know, we're citizens of Riverton and we just don't want to see the covenants changed just so that somebody could go in there and build up apartments that are going to create more problems for us, the city police. We kind of felt that this started out being done kind of sneaky because the only way we found out about it, my wife was home during the day here a few months ago and she saw a guy out in the field right next to our house, right along our property line, out there digging. And she went out and she asked him, she said, "What are you doing?" He said, "I'm just doing my job." And, you know, he was putting stakes in and everything. Well, my wife called City Hall to find out what was going on. Nothing was ever said to any of us up there and like, Director here, she mentioned, I've got the petition that we took around and, you know, they wanted to know if all the people in the homes were renters or owners, owning the homes. And everybody up there owns a home. Everybody's against it, but obviously, I guess I'm just the one here to speak for everybody. Like I said, I was hoping more people would show up to help, especially after last week, I thought they were going to. But, so, you got any questions? I appreciate you letting me have the time to speak, so.
Anybody have any questions they'd like to ask? My concern is if there's covenants on that land, how do they get out of the covenants? Does that work now? Try that.
Your Honor?
Yeah.
Works now. The city does not enforce covenants and covenants can be changed by majority of ownership of properties, but the city does not enforce covenant.
Your Honor, Mr. Larson.
So the majority of the citizens up there changed the covenants?
I don't believe the covenants have been changed yet.
Your Honor, I think what we're talking about is homeowners association, I believe, of what you're talking about. And homeowners associations, the city doesn't recognize those. If they have stricter laws or things that go by, that's within their own group and the city doesn't enforce those or look at those in any aspect that we do with zoning.
So if you've got property that's single-family dwelling, says site-built homes only, you can do anything you want on it and the city will, the city just says, "Go to court over it?" And those are recorded?
Well, are these deed restrictions on the properties or are we talking about covenants within a homeowners association?
I believe the city has a copy of the covenants as far as I'm aware. I've got a copy of the Declaration of Covenants and conditions and restrictions here for Wolf Creek Estates subdivision.
Yeah, Your Honor, so I believe those are homeowners association. There's covenants you can put on properties. I've seen in other states where they have to go to low income, other people have to sell the low income. Those are covenant restrictions based on that, but this relating to zoning, this has no bearing on that.
I've got a lot of land I can have fun with.
Well, it has to be within the zone, so if you're in a Zone A...
Doesn't sound like that means a darn. I mean, if you can change covenants and it says...
Well, no, I'm saying that...
And you can change them without recourse, that's an interesting situation.
Your Honor?
Ms. Frobion.
My understanding is that the city sets forth zoning, which says you're only allowed to use the land for this and the city enforces that zoning. The homeowners association is all the people who live in that area agree that they are going to live by this certain set of rules. If enough of the ownership of land decides that they don't like the rules anymore, they can overthrow it and I think if you look here, there's enough lots being bought by these individuals that they would have enough ownership to change the covenants to anything they wish.
They haven't, though.
Well, that's fine. They can buy it and then change it and then build. That's their option.
I know, but they haven't yet. Talking about today.
But we don't enforce those covenants because that's an agreement between the homeowners. The city isn't a homeowner. The city just enforces zones. That's my understanding.
I could say, I understand the city does not enforce covenants. So basically, what I'm asking is that the city not allow the covenants that we've got to be changed to build apartments. Like I said, if they build single-family homes up there, that'll keep our property values where they are and, you know, instead of depleting our property values. I know he says it's not going to hurt our property values, but it's going to. You know, we've got one of the families that was here last week, they just bought their house last year. As like they said, when they got up here and spoke, they have nowhere to go, they can't do anything because they have no equity in their home. So I'm just, that's what I'm asking, we're asking is just not to change the covenants to allow this and I wish they would just go back to work and put single-family homes in there. One other thing, there was mention after we had first turned in the petition about a public meeting. I think this gentleman over here mentioned that. We got a letter from him from Missoula, Montana, but there was no kind of public meeting with any of the, what is it, nine homeowners up there. Nobody received a phone call or anything about a public meeting. They haven't tried to contact any of us to sit down and talk to us. And I think that was one thing that was mentioned at one time that they thought would be a good idea. They haven't done it and we just feel that, you know, we don't want this just shoved down our throat and just let them have their way about everything, you know. So I'm proud of the property that we've got and try to take care of it and everything and I just don't want to see everything go to like those apartments are right now. They've got nice lawns, but it's everybody in there with all the trash and the problems and police calls and everything up there.
Mr. Martinez?
The City of Riverton is bound by zoning. So unless you try and get some way to change that zoning to zoning A, where single housing only, zoning B allows apartment buildings there, until that is changed, our hands are tied to changing that. We can't arbitrarily go in and change it and say, "Okay, you can't build here because zoning says you can."
Okay, I understand, but I'm just...
And I understand your concern. I know what you're talking about.
I just don't want the covenants changed.
But our hands are tied. We can't go in and change your covenants. We can't do nothing about that. We have to go by the zoning and the only way to do that is change the zoning.
If you'd like to speak?
I'd like to ask one question.
Come up, use the microphone. You're on TV tonight, you know.
I would address that. My name is Candy Olmstead and I live at 811 Wolf Creek Drive. I just wanted to know, if you can't change anything, then I feel like we've been lied to. We bought the house with the understanding that no apartments could be built next to us and I'll tell you something, if I'd have known this was going to happen, I'd have never bought the house. I love the house, it's a custom-built home. And he wants to build a parking lot next to my house? I want to walk out my front door and see apartments. I want to walk out my back door to see a parking lot. I want to see the trash, I want to see the drunks walking through my yard, staggering through, throwing things at my dog, trying to get in my yard. I don't want this. It's embarrassing. I love my house, I've worked hard on it and for him to sit there and say, "It's not going to do anything to it." Bull. I've seen what College Hill Apartments have done. Now it's starting to get a little worse over there again. It's ridiculous and he's lying, as far as I'm concerned. And when I walked out and saw the man digging in my driveway and I asked him, "What are you doing?" "Just my job." "What for?" "Just doing my job." It's sneaky. I just don't like this whole situation. It's very sneaky and I don't trust him. So thank you for listening to me.
Thank you for coming in.
I guess, I'll be honest with you, I guess I'm a little confused. I mean, if, I'm assuming that the reason we're here is because we do have a choice because it's broken up into seven or 14 smaller lots where they can't put multifamily housing, correct? So if it stays the same size that they currently are, even though it's zoned for multifamily, there's no room for multifamily. Is that the issue?
Well, they would put in duplexes.
Your, Your Honor, duplexes could be put on each one of the lots. This, I know a little bit of background from this. When the people were originally building those houses, they were going to try to do a subdivision there and build houses along there. I believe it's probably when the economy went the other direction and the developer that was doing that pulled out and that there was evidently no more market for building single-family dwellings up there at that point in time. These covenants that they're talking about are covenants on Block Six and Block Seven only. It does not encompass the other little houses that are on Dickinson Avenue. So the covenants would only take into account the two houses that were built and then these two properties at this point in time. And if there was a market for those, I... if there was a market for those, I would assume they would have been built by this time.
Sir, I would make a motion to amend previous motion to just table it or put it on hold until we get some information on the management company and can get some information on the property that they currently manage in Riverton so we can get an idea as to whether it's in well-maintained, not well-maintained. I mean, that to me is, it would be a big issue as far as addressing a lot of their concerns. I would, I would make that amendment to the...
That we would, that we would table this?
Table it until we get the information on the management company.
Until our next meeting, or until our next regular meeting, which will be in two weeks. Just a minute. Let me see if I get a second.
Second.
Second. It's moved and seconded. Go ahead.
I did get some information on that other property that is owned by the Wyoming Housing Network. It's Esther Book Apartments on 1415 West Park Avenue. It's my understanding that they've just gone through recent major renovations on that project. And I was up there about two months ago and it, and it was in great working condition.
Your Honor? Wait. I've got... Did somebody over here, did you have something, Stephen?
Your Honor, I was just going to try to explain the difference between zoning and replats. In zoning, when we're changing the zone, then we're looking at the use and we're looking at everything about it. And the council has ultimate authority to say, we don't believe this particular use is best in this particular area. What we're dealing with here is a replat. You're looking at how it's divided up. You have to deny it based on what's on this map, not based on the use because that has already been determined. Zoning B allows for what they're planning to do. And so the issue is not, it's not what they're doing, it's, you need to base your decision on, you don't like the way these are configured or the easements are set up wrong. We do replats all the time. That's very different than zoning. Zoning has already been approved, so you're telling someone for a particular property that you can't do this when it's allowed by the city code.
Mr. Larson? I understand that. But we're taking big pieces, cutting them into pieces significant for six-family dwelling versus duplexes. The difference between a duplex and a sixplex is not arithmetic. It's geometric. The amount of debris and waste from that sixplex is not the same as three duplexes. And how do I know that? I own them. And I'm not absent. I'm not somewhere. I've got a phone that rings anytime they need me. And for somebody to say that an absentee owner is going to take care of that property, well, he's not. Thank you. Got a motion to table this in two weeks. Further discussion on that motion? All those in favor of tabling?
Aye.
Those opposed, say aye. Better raise hands. All in favor of tabling? Going to table. One, two, three to table? Okay? Opposed to tabling? One, two, three. Okay, so that fails. Okay, let's vote on it. All those in favor of replating lots five through eleven of west of Hill Street, east of Wolf Creek Drive, Block Seven, Wyoming Community Development Authority petitioner. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those who are opposed, say no.
No.
Motion fails. Replat of lots one through fourteen, east of Dickinson Avenue, west of Will Creek Drive, Block Six, Wyoming Community Development Authority petitioner. I think we had the community development director's report on that. The chair would entertain a motion.
Your Honor?
Martinez?
I make a motion to approve the replat of lots one through fourteen, Block Six, College View Development.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Do we have any discussion on this? Now, this is a senior housing, right? Do we have any discussion on this? Your Honor? Mr. Larson? Is that for the fifty-five and over? They're all single-family? Or sing, I mean, they're one unit, they're one apartment?
Bedroom apartment.
One room, one bathroom?
Yep.
Any other discussion? Doesn't seem to be. All those in favor of the replat on lots one through fourteen in Block Six? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
I vote yes. Motion passes. County replat west of Rain Tree Estates and north of West Mountain View Drive. Todd Poulsen, the petitioner. Community Development Director's report, please.
Yes, Your Honor. This property is located west of Rain Tree Estates and north of West Mountain View Drive and north of Poulsen Estates, which was platted in 2010. This subdivision is outside of the city limits, but within one mile. This plat will create four lots. Lots one, two, and three are one acre each, and Lot Four is 3.238 acres. This acreage is within the Fremont County regulations requiring a minimum of one acre to prevent a septic system, but per the plat, septic systems will not be allowed. The developer proposes to extend city sewer to these lots. The community development department sent requests for utility views and the public works department had no problem with the proposed sewer extension to this area. The installation of the sewer will be inspected and approved by the public works department. There is no water or gas in this area. There are easements on all sides of each lot in the proposed subdivision and they continue north of the cul-de-sac. County planning has several issues with the subdivision in this area and have been addressing these items. Their recommendation to the Riverton Planning Commission was to review the plat, but to recommend approval contingent upon approval by the Fremont County Planning Commission. A couple of the items they are addressing are drainage along Poulsen Drive to West Mountain View Drive and the status of the existing road. Mr. Poulsen at that time was in attendance and spoke to these issues. Community development staff also brought up a few items that need to be corrected on the final plat. The planning commission did review and recommend approval of this plat on May 21st contingent upon approval by the Fremont County Planning Commission. And they will review this plat on June 25th.
Would the city clerk, please? Let's see. I guess we just need, we just need a motion to approve this replat.
Your Honor, I would move to approve the replat of Rivera Estates.
Second. Been moved and seconded by Mr. Larson. Any discussion?
Your Honor? Just, I have one question here. Why was this brought to the Riverton Planning Commission before it was approved by the Fremont County Commission?
Your Honor, the planning commission, the Fremont County Planning Commission now asks us to look at this prior to the time that they look at it. That is the decision of the new management over there.
So, Your Honor, so they want our approval before they approve it?
Yes, Your Honor, that is correct.
I have a problem with that.
One mile.
I understand what the boundaries are, but I have a problem that it's in the county and they want us to approve it before they approve it.
Oh, I know that.
Your Honor?
Ms. Fabbian?
So there's no applicable zoning here, then?
Your Honor, that's correct.
So they could build an apartment on the large lot?
Your Honor, there is no zoning within the county.
Thank you.
I wonder if that request for city approval doesn't have something to do with the hooking up to the city sewer? And we decided that was okay, right?
Your Honor, yes, we did. Contingent upon the county approving that, they did go look at that site, I believe it was last week or the week before. The rain kind of started, but they are addressing some of the issues that I discussed in here.
Thank you. Any other questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
I vote, mayor votes aye. Motion passes. The next item on the agenda is ordinance number fifteen dash zero zero six, third and final reading, fighting by arrangement. Would the city clerk please read ordinance number fifteen dash zero zero six by title only?
Yes, Your Honor, this is proposed ordinance number fifteen dash zero zero six on third and final reading and ordinance amending Title Nine, Public Peace, Morals and Welfare, Chapter nine point zero eight, Offenses Against Public Peace and Decency, by inserting Section nine point zero eight point two two zero, Fighting by Arrangement of the Riverton Municipal Code and repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith and providing for an effective date.
Thank you. The chair would entertain a motion for the adoption, ordinance fifteen dash zero zero six on third and final reading.
Your Honor? I move that we adopt ordinance number fifteen dash zero zero six on final reading.
Second.
Been moved, it's been seconded. Is there any discussion? Go ahead.
We've been talking about this now for a couple of months. And I've been, I think, to every meeting that had anything to do with this. You know, everybody knows that if we don't ban fighting by arrangement in Riverton, the whole city's just going to fall off the map. This is the biggest concern for the city right now, but you know, it seemed to me like four weeks ago, we spent forty-five minutes talking about a durapatcher to fix the city streets. You know, spent about ten minutes on this fighting by arrangement for forty-five minutes on a durapatcher to fix the city streets. Last week, or two weeks ago, we listened to a gentleman talk about fixing to sue the city for the damages on his vehicle because of the bare-knuckle boxing. Oh, no, it was, again, that was the city streets. You know, seems to me like if you walked down Main Street and asked a hundred people what they're more concerned about, fighting by arrangement or fixing the city streets, I bet a hundred of them would say, let's fix the streets. You're fixing to pass an ordinance based on the advice of a man who has a federal lawsuit against him right now for giving you that advice. Seems to me like one of the reasons that the city streets are in such bad repair right now is the financing. We don't have the financing to fix the city streets. If the lawsuit against Mr. Lukenhoff does not go in Mr. Lukenhoff's favor, seems like he's going to be liable to the plaintiff in that lawsuit for damages. It also seems to me if Riverton City Council passes an ordinance based on advice that gets that man sued and causes him to be liable for damages, that also opens up the city of Riverton to be liable for damages to the plaintiff, which means there's less money to fix the city streets. Seems to me like most of the folks in this town want y'all fixing the streets. I think the majority of people who care about bare-knuckle boxing in Riverton are probably in this room right now. There's a minority of them that want it stopped. There's a minority of them that want it to happen. The majority of people don't care about this. They care about fixing the city streets. Now, even if Riverton was to get into a lawsuit and prevail, you still had to pay a lawyer, and that's less money to fix the city streets. Seems to me like the wise thing to do would be to wait and see how this lawsuit against Mr. Lukenhoff plays out before you go getting Riverton liable and spending more money that ought to be spent on fixing the city streets. These kids ain't hurting, you know, and I've heard your arguments. We got to put a layer of protection between the fighters and the promoters. But I haven't heard one fighter show up and testify how Mr. Williams has taken advantage of them. Matter of fact, I think there's probably one young man that'll say Mr. Williams has taken pretty good care of him, and he's the only one that's been injured. And it was in a glove match, by the way. I don't think people mentioned that. He's the only one that's been injured. Did Corey insurance pay your medical costs? So that didn't hurt you? Did Corey help you pay your rent while you was out of work? I don't think he's been hurt by Corey. Are any of you guys fighters? Have any of you been damaged by Corey? Do you know anybody that has competed in one of Corey's events that would say Corey has taken advantage of him? Not one? The people that you're trying to tell them how to live their life didn't ask you to do this. They just want to pursue their passion. And I appreciate that because I got to pursue mine for thirty years. And I think they deserve the same respect. I say again, let them box, let them fight. Leave them alone. Fix the streets.
Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Billy Martin. I'm one of the fighters. Actually, I just won a United States middleweight title belt from bare-knuckle boxing. I've been an MMA fighter for seven years. This is what I do for a living. This is my job. I first did a bare-knuckle box. Really didn't know much about it, really haven't watched a lot of it on TV or anything like that. And actually, I did very good. I came out with a win. Didn't get injured, didn't get hurt. You know, anything like that at all. I started looking up bare-knuckle boxing and started seeing how big it actually is. Like you see on TV, you see the UFC, you see Pride Fighting, you see MMA, things like that, all on TV. Bare-knuckle boxing is honestly just as big or maybe bigger than MMA. There's a whole nother organization that's being formed and things like that. You know, like the gentleman behind me, Stephen, you know, like he got hurt that had gloves on. He, you know, when you have gloves, you are allowed fifteen yards of gauze. You're allowed ten yards of tape. When I put on my, excuse me, when I put my MMA gloves on, I can hit somebody as hard as I can and it doesn't hurt. It doesn't hurt me at all. And so I can do more damage with MMA gloves than I can a bare-knuckle boxing. A bare-knuckle boxing match usually probably lasts maybe four minutes. I mean, if that. I mean, you get, you know, tired, things like that, you know, I mean, it's probably same thing in MMA, it can go on. It's more. The only thing you need in MMA is cardio. In bare-knuckle boxing, you can hit somebody and it hurts your hand. It does. And so you're not going to throw that punch harder. You know, you're going to back up or, you know, take a break. Since I started bare-knuckle boxing, I've had a couple gentlemen come down from London that watched me fight. And I talked to them every single day. And they want me to fight one of their London guys in London for possibly a world bare-knuckle boxing middleweight belt. You know, that to me is one of the biggest things I've ever had in my entire life. I mean, getting to travel and getting to do things like that. I fight here in Riverton, you know. I would love it if there's more MMA here in Riverton. But being so there's a commission, they want five, six, seven thousand dollars to pay for a commission. So you have to make that just to go broke, I mean, just to go even. So you're not going to make any money. So that's why no promoters put on MMA fights in Riverton anymore. When Corey came and asked me to fight in bare-knuckle boxing, and I accepted because I have fans, I have friends, I have family that love watching me compete. I have been in a ring with somebody who I completely hated, did not like him at all. By the end of that ring was over, whether I won or I lost, I was the first person to shake that man's hand and say, congratulations, you're either the better man or congratulations, everything is solved. I've never had an enemy walking out of a ring, ever. Just like I said, I have sponsors, I have... Just like I said, I have sponsors, I have family, friends that love watching me compete. And because of the last bare-knuckle fight, I won the United States middleweight belt. I've got the biggest opportunity coming in two months, where I get to sign a UFC contract and fight a UFC veteran. Because of that bare-knuckle fight, because I am World League ranked, I'm the number two ranked middleweight champion in the world, in bare-knuckle boxing. And so because they see that, because they see how much, you know, I've progressed with it, they want me to go on and do more. I mean, I've done every kind of fighting possible, and I've been hurt in every single one, except for bare-knuckle boxing. I've never been hurt. I've never even hurt anybody in bare-knuckle boxing. Yeah, I mean, you may get a bloody nose, or, you know, something like that, or a black eye, but that's about it. That's the most I've ever been hurt in a bare-knuckle fight. You know, I train every single day, I've got a bunch of kids that I train. Kids that literally go out and get in trouble, and have been in trouble with the law, or doing bad in school. Actually, I had four kids in school, that I trained with them, and I made them, told them, you know, you guys want my help in this sport, you know, you get your grades up, there ain't no Fs. I won't train you guys if you do that kind of thing at all. You don't get any violence, and you stay away from drugs. All the kids that I have trained, some of them don't fight anymore, but for one kid, in particular, in and out of trouble, was looking at prison time, bad with drugs, I mean horrible. Now he's got a family, he's got two children, works full-time, and his net hasn't been in trouble with the law in over two years. And so, like, you know, that's helping. People wanna see it. I think there's a lot of people, don't get me wrong, that don't wanna see it. They think it's a, sanctioned, excuse my language, sanctioned cockfighting, but it's nothing like that at all. I mean, you have somebody in the middle of a ring with you, making sure that you don't get your brains bashed out. You have somebody there, making, watching you, making sure you don't get completely hurt, or anything like that. And so to me, you know, if you ban bare-knuckle boxing, I mean, you're taking away from a lot of kids that actually wanna, you know, pursue their career, or wanna do something like that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Levi Potts. I'm a huge fan of this sport. I've seen the help of several of my friends out. Who are in trouble. The sport has actually helped them, made them more respectable. It's not a big deal about trying to go out there and being a badass. It's about the passion of the sport.
Thank you.
My name's, I work for Corey. I'm the backstage, I run the backstage, basically. I watch these fighters. They're nervous as all, getting into this ring. After they get out of that ring, you should see the smile, the, the passion that these guys have. They wanna get back in the ring. I have people coming up to me every day asking me, when is the next fight? Who's gonna be in it? All I can do is say, I don't know yet, because we haven't set it up. But these guys love this. I have people coming up to me asking who can train them, so they can get in the ring. I turn them to Corey, because I'm just the one that handles the back. And he's the one who handles the fighters. He talks to them. Even if he's in the ring roughing, he will step out of that ring and go talk to the fighters if they need him. I'm there, Corey's there, Kreek's there, we're all there, mainly for all the fighters, not just to put this show on. But these people help. They get their anger out in that ring sometimes, and they get out. I see guys get in trouble all the time. And all they wanna do is fight, fight, fight. And we tell them, no, that's not what this ring's for. You don't take your anger out in this ring, you don't, no. We're all friends. I see these guys get all angry and then get in that ring. Afterwards, yeah, they release it all. They shake each other's hands and, on Facebook, all I hear is people getting, hits of all kinds of people going on, and they wanna be their friends. I'm, I'm friends with a lot of those fighters anymore now. I've learned a lot of the business because of these two. And I wanna keep learning. And the only way that's gonna happen is if we keep putting them on here. And people love it. Maybe they're not here to support us tonight, but there's a lot of people who love this sport, and wanna watch it, and wanna keep it going. It gives us something to do in this town. These guys are not getting hurt. Yes, one of our guys got hurt, but he did get taken care of right away. We had another guy that night, got hurt, his wrist. We had our medical staff saying, no, he should not fight. We didn't let him fight. Corey's, put his foot down. Said, no, you're not fighting. Because medical, no. He would've screwed his wrist up if he would've fought anymore. But this kid decided, okay, fine. Corey said, no, we're done. I don't know what else to say. I've been to these meetings, you guys probably have all seen me here. And I'm supporting them one hundred percent. We should keep it here. I mean, really, how much stuff do we really have going on here that people can do? People love this. They come to me all the time, like I said, asking me, when is the next fight? Um, I don't know what else to say, but keep it here. I mean, everybody loves it. We don't have problems, the cops don't come, we never have any problems. We have our medical staff on hand, checking these guys out before the fights and after the fights, making sure they are okay. I know a lot of it has been medical, there's, all kinds of stuff about the medical reason why. These guys aren't getting hurt. They might, like you said, get a bloody nose, get a black eye. Yeah, one of our fighters did get hurt. But he was wearing gloves, he was not bare-knuckle boxing. But I hope you guys decide to cancel the order and let us do what we have to do, to help people out here. I mean, these guys love it. I don't know what else to say. Thank you.
I'm Stephen Cardenas. I've talked to you guys before, on multiple occasions. I can actually talk now, when I'm wired. But, yeah, going off what Preacher said, um, yeah, Corey's insurance did pay, and did pick up on everything, like I did tell you. He did help me out when I was out of work, out of surgery, to pay my rent and my utilities and stuff like that, to, keep me on my feet and keep me where I'm at. None of us have been taken advantage of, like I've stated previous. And another thing that was kinda mentioned, and I don't remember from past meetings if it was, is the revenue of it and all that stuff also, for what it brings back into the town. I think, I'm not sure if it was or not. But basically, if you think about it, if you're selling stuff for it and everything else to promote it, to put it on and all that, and you get money coming in, you're gonna be putting money into the town also, if you guys approve it. You let us do what we're gonna do, I mean, it's like Eileen said, it's, basically, some of the kids that are, well, some of the people, that I've seen in these events and everything else, I've seen them on the streets, just sitting there fighting with people. I mean, I'm not gonna lie about it, I've done it too. Just straight up doing it. And then ever since they started putting these on and stuff, those individuals that I know, they have quit doing that, they've quit looking for stuff, they've quit, looking to go out and just getting fights and everything else. I mean, I personally have. Because it was also playing on what Billy said, I mean, we settle our stuff in the ring. If there is anything, if there's any problems whatsoever when you go in there, it's, it's settled. My fighter, I mean, the guy that I ended up fighting that night, me and him, we knew each other, and we've had, we had problems like a little bit, but then after that, everything was good. We were settled, where everything was even. I mean, it was like, hell, we're best friends now. So, I mean, it's one thing to look at it from a different perspective than from, as a city's perspective. You know what I mean? I mean, that kinda doesn't make any sense at the same time as it does. You gotta look at it from the citizens of the town, you know, from their point of view also. I mean, you can't just throw, I mean, we, as in, we gotta look at it from your guys' point of view, but you gotta look at it from our point of view also. If you got a multiple amount of people saying, hey, let's just keep it like this, you know, and you go over and you talk to the town and everything else, and like, let's say, we could probably do petitions and stuff like that, of people that wanna have it, that wanna keep it here and everything else. I mean, what would, what would that say? I mean, if you got, let's say, a group of a hundred people saying, hey, let's keep it here, and you got twenty-five, I mean, it'd be more numbers than that. But you got twenty-five saying they don't want it here, I mean, look at the percentage there. I mean, you can't just look at it from your guys' point of view. You gotta look at it from ours too, you gotta look at it from this, uh, from the people's point of view around town and everything else. And it's like Billy said, yeah, we had people here from London looking at it. I didn't know much about it either. I looked into it also, just like what he said. I have looked, I had just got a message on Facebook, which, if I were to print it off, I could hand it to you, of people that wanna do a documentary on me for the History Channel. I mean, and, he got the same message. I mean, we've talked to people, I mean, it's, it's not, it's not recognized, like, it's not a big thing, like, a lot of people don't know about it, but it's getting there. And it seems like when people start to bring something up that a lot of people don't know about, they're gonna have questions and concerns. I mean, that's why we're here. I mean, in a way, I mean, if you look at it. And with stuff like that, you gotta, you can't act like you know everything on it. I mean, I don't know a hundred percent on it. You know, I don't know a hundred percent on everything that's thrown in there, but I do know that it is changing. I mean, everything evolves, okay? Stuff is gonna change all the time. And that's, and change is actually a good thing. I mean, it could be bad and it could be good too. I mean, we've gone through and we have researched, and when I say we, I mean the fighters and everything else. I bet, I could say about twenty people that I know that didn't know a thing about it, that didn't know a thing about, the ancient times back, like, let's go history school, like, history class, basically, didn't know anything about any of it. And then after we started getting involved in it and everything else, you know, you can look up, and you can see like back in, um, well, before our time, that it was originated then. You can, it, there's a lot there that a lot of us don't know. But at the same time, you gotta sit there and think, well, you know, we got a majority of people that want this, but we have, or, but we have less of a majority that don't want it. I mean, it's like what Eileen said, or, I don't remember who said it, that they've talked to people, and the majority of the people that they have talked to state clearly that they have no problem with it. I mean, I work at Plains Tire, and I have people that come in, that see my fit, well, since this, they know exactly who I am because of my jaw and everything else, okay? And yeah, it was a glove match. But I have had people come to me and ask me how I felt after that, how I felt after, after leaving the ring, how I felt going into the ring, and asking me why you guys are trying to ban it. I've had elderly couples ask me that. Last week, I had a, I had a, I think she was like sixty-five years old, and her husband, they recognized me from the news, and they asked me about the fights. And they asked me, why would they be trying to ban something when it's giving you guys something to do, and it's keeping you guys off of the streets? You know, I mean, if you think about that, would you, and, can I ask you a question?
Go ahead.
Would you rather see us basically out in the streets, just starting fights and starting violence, having the cops deal with it? Or having it in an area to where it's controlled?
Have you, have you read the ordinance that we are gonna vote on tonight?
Yes, I have.
Okay.
And I was, I was here last meeting too.
Okay, and so, and so you understand that we're not banning bare-knuckle boxing in Riverton?
Yeah.
Okay. You know, we just want it to be sanctioned by somebody.
Okay.
Okay, what we're saying is that the city of Riverton doesn't have the expertise at the time, or the energy, to manage this activity. Okay? And yet we don't feel like we can ignore the activity. Okay? So if there's a sanctioning body that's involved in this, that would be recognized by either the federal government or the state of Wyoming, under, under the federal laws, or the Wyoming statute, one of the two, that is gonna manage this and, and regulate it, then we're happy with it. Okay? So, so this is, you know, and the city of Riverton, you know, the city of Riverton has got distinct city limits. You know, and the ordinance that we passed tonight only applies inside those city limits. So if you guys wanna rent somebody's barn, you know, outside of town, and get after it, then, then we don't have any way to regulate that at all. Mr. Williams, I, I guess you're gonna have a few words.
I'm the grand finale, I guess, today. First thing I'd like to do is apologize to you for some of the things I did. I called and had a fit with Mr. Weaver, about some phone calls that I'd received from people in the community, that officers were stopping, stopping them, asking where I was, telling them to, make, tell me to stay out of town, because of this bare-knuckle stuff, that I wasn't welcome here, that they would throw me in jail for it. That's entirely inappropriate. And I did track down who that was, it was a sheriff's deputy, and I apologize again for that, coming back to you, Mike. That, that matter has been handled at this point. I've got a few things to say. I understand you guys aren't trying to ban this. But by passing this ordinance at this stage of the sport, that's essentially what you're doing. It, it's not developed enough to a point, revenue-wise, that it justifies the state getting involved. That's the reason that there is no regulatory body, okay? The Association of Boxing Commissions, Tim Lukinoff, I've had issues with that man for eight years. The guy's been a pain in my side, he's cost me hundreds of thousands of dollars over the years, trying to apply this law to stuff that is not involved professional boxing. That law is very specifically written for a purpose. It is written to create a firewall, as Mike discussed in the newspaper, but, uh, to prevent coercion. In this situation, I believe the only coercion that's going on here is involved between Mike and the city council. You guys are taking advantage of me in this situation, I believe that entirely. Association of Boxing Commission's two thousand thirteen conference meetings. It was a motion by Mr. Lick Limbo from New Jersey's Athletic Commissioner, representative from New Jersey. He expressed concerns about gloves and a number of rounds, round time surfaces, et cetera, and the fact that, that bare-knuckle fight promoters wanted the, the results of their professional contests to count as professional boxing results. It was nominated, voted, and ratified in that convention, and I quote, "The ABC does not recognize bare-knuckle boxing as a professional boxing contest because of its deviations and cage type." End quote. This is not professional boxing, the Muhammad Ali Act does not apply, it is a federal law for a specific sport, that was designed to take organized crime out of it. It's got nothing to do with the safety of fighters, it has to do with protecting revenue, and to take revenue out of the fighters' pockets. The, it was designed to help journeymen so they wouldn't be taken advantage of, and I can tell you from experience as a journeyman professional boxer, that the purse has dropped seventy percent. The amount of money we made dropped seventy percent with the passing of Muhammad Ali Boxing Act. I believe that act is unconstitutional, which is part of the lawsuit that I filed, which you guys have been name a party of. There's case law in, in regards to this, been upheld more than a dozen times, State versus the Olympic Club. It was, it was a gentleman of the Lander FBI office that handed me this case when I took in my paperwork, prior to this last event, and said, am I in violation of Muhammad Ali Boxing Act? He said, I am not, because of, State versus Olympic Club, the Federal Appeals Court ruled that laws prohibiting bare-knuckle boxing, prize fighting, do not apply to glove contests, as they are different sports by definition. Now, entirely, okay, this is, we're in a reverse situation at this point, but that specific case law, eliminates Muhammad Ali Boxing Act entirely. Yet you guys are trying to expand that to, to put it on with bare-knuckle boxing. I have no problem with bare-knuckle boxing being regulated. It is a safe sport. I believe that, I've been able to prove that, more than one state commission. It is not at a point in this state that it can be justified to be regulated. By you guys stepping in and regulating it, you're shutting it down in a community that has fostered and allowed this sport to grow in the United States. It is very much in its intimacy here, where it's not in the rest of the country, in any way, shape, or form. That's the part that I don't understand. You're taking away a positive thing. There has not been a single person. I've watched every one of these meetings. I've not been here because I was told specifically by a prosecutor, to stay out of Wyoming and keep my mouth shut, or he was gonna throw me in jail. I'm here, come arrest me. I will spend the rest of my life in jail for this, because I believe in it, a hundred percent. This is not right. What you are doing, I believe is inappropriate and unconstitutional. You're violating our rights and our freedoms. Bringing it to the city council the way you did, Mike, I believe is unconstitutional, and against federal law. In fact, I've, I have signed a sworn affidavit, under United States Code eighteen, Chapter thirteen, Section two forty-two, which is the color of law. You aware of what the color of law is, are you not, Mike? Are you aware of it? I'm asking you a specific question.
Mr. Williams?
I know, I know he knows what it is, because it's what allows him to arrest somebody under probable cause. It's also the same thing that protects- It's also the same thing that protects the citizens of this country from being, having laws that do not apply to them, applied unlawfully. It's the same thing that I've requested and on behalf of Tim Lukinoff. That man's chased me all over the country over this crap, and I won't stand for it no more. I don't care if I spend the rest of my life in jail. It doesn't matter to me.
It seems as though since we're named in a lawsuit and, uh, this is, uh, bound for court, that, uh, maybe we'll just let that where it's run scores.
I do have one question for you. Um, you guys are dead set on this being regulated. Where are the people in support of it? Everybody here does not want to see this happen. I've watched every one of these on TV, and there's not been one person in here supporting this except for that man sitting right there. I think that needs to be recognized. I've also prepared an af, not an affidavit, a, uh, petition. Um, I've done some research on, uh, uh, on your, on your fine fellows', um, positions as well. Uh, I'm prepared to, to, uh, start a petition in order to have you all removed as well 'cause I believe this is a vi, const, a constitutional violation, a hundred percent. If you pass this ordinance, I will pursue it. Within ninety days, I will hold a show in Riverton and I will challenge this law before the U.S. Supreme Court. Thank you.
Thank you. Any discussion, counsel? No? All those in favor, vote aye. Oh, it's roll call vote. Ms. Clark, would you call or hold?
Yes, Your Honor. Councilman Martin Canaan?
Yes.
Councilman Jonathan Fabian? Councilman Lee Martinez?
Yes.
Councilman Kyle Larson?
No.
Councilwoman Holly Jibbin?
Yes.
Mayor John Lars Baker?
Yes. Motion passes. The next item of business is a public hearing, Consideration Resolution thirteen seventeen, Fiscal Year fifteen sixteen proposed budget. Could we have the city administrators report, please?
Yes, Your Honor. Pursuant to the direction of the city council and as required by state's law, staff has prepared a fiscal budget that represents a balanced approach for operating the city of Riverton and providing services to the citizens of Riverton. Uh, we've held a budget work session. Uh, we've had publications of the budget hearing that was advertised, and the final phase is adopting Resolution thirteen seventeen. Uh, staff is proud to say that we have a balanced budget. City's total budget, including capital, is thirty-three million, two hundred and fifty thousand, nine hundred and seventy-four. A lot of time and effort has gone into preparing the budget, and I'd like to thank, uh, our staff for their hard work. Uh, we have financial reserves at eighteen point five percent per council policy. Uh, in the enterprise funds, revenues exceed expenses in all funds, with the exception of the airport, which is subsidized by the general fund. Two resolutions were approved at the May nineteenth, two thousand fifteen city council meeting to assign general fund reserves an amount of two hundred thousand towards airport revenue guarantee and two hundred thousand towards the North Federal Stormwater Project. These have been included in the budget under the general fund capital. The city's general fund revenues split this year with some increases and some decreases. Estimated revenues, eight million, seven hundred and sixty-six thousand and ninety-six dollars. We are projecting slight increases in property tax, use tax, special fuel tax, supplemental funding, reimbursement for school resource officers and DCI officer, and franchise fees from Charter Cable. We're seeing some decreases in sales tax and court fines. Sales and use tax revenues make up about thirty percent of the general fund. Grants account for forty-two percent of the entire budget for the city of Riverton. Under expenses, uh, included in this budget is three hundred and seventy-seven thousand, three hundred and eight, allocated to nine contract for services agency line items within the city budget, which is down twenty-six hundred from the previous year. All of the funding for contract for services is taken out of supplemental funding from the state of Wyoming. City of Riverton is a service-based organization and should not be surprised at the largest single category of expenses to provide services to the citizen as personnel. It's important that the city strives to stay competitive with comparable cities. Last year was difficult, a year for employees, and the city was not able to do a cost of living adjustment, and there were several expenses that were passed on to the employees, including increases to health insurance rates. The percentage of what employees paid for single coverage on health insurance was increased from two percent to ten percent. We extended the pay scale from seven steps to ten steps, which in turn lowers the percentage an employee gets each year, and the increase in the Wyoming retirement was passed on to the employees. However, with the retirement of several long-term, uh, employees, interim vacancies and the hiring of new employees at lower salaries, the city's seen a cost savings of four hundred and three thousand over the past fifteen months. So including this budget, we have a two-point-five COLA for captains, division ma, uh, managers, department head, and city administrator, three-point-five increase for all other employees. The sixteen percent health insurance increase will be absorbed by the employee and the city on the percentage of the plan that they choose. Wyoming retirement system has increased employer's contribution by three-quarters of a percent. Uh, the capital plan for this fiscal year was increased from the previous year mainly because thirteen of the sixteen million dollars in capital project consists of the Airport Runway Reconstruction Project. Some of the projects that we're, that are in the capital plan include the Big Ben Improvement, uh, improvement close to the new Willow Creek Elementary School that includes replacing a large culvert and sewer improvements in Major Road, North Federal Design for Utilities, a tremble, carpeting in City Hall, air fiber, sewer upgrades, improvements to water plant, water system improvements, lift view, lift station remodel, sewer system improvements, and several airport projects. And so staff is recommending approval of Resolution thirteen seventeen.
Thank you. Uh, the chair would entertain a motion to open a public hearing.
Your Honor, I would move to open the public hearing.
Second. Thank you, Mr. Larson. It has been moved and seconded that we open a public hearing. Uh, any discussion or amendments? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion passed. I now declare the public hearing to be open. The hearing will be conducted in accordance with state statutes with other applicable laws. I would ask those individuals wishing to address the council to approach the podium, identify yourselves for the record. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak?
Seeing none, Your Honor, I would move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to close the public hearing. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. So I declare the public hearing to be closed. Chair would entertain a motion to adopt Resolution number thirteen seventeen.
Your Honor, I'll make the motion to, uh, adopt the Resolution number thirteen seventeen.
Second.
Been seconded by Mr. Larson. Any discussion?
Sir.
Go ahead.
Uh, again, I, I, I don't see any need to waste the time to go through individual lines, but again, I will voice my disappointment, I guess, or whatever, in even reserving the, uh, the two hundred thousand dollars for the airport. Uh, we've gone now for well over a month since we, uh, we voted on that. Uh, as far as I know, there's been no other entities or organizations that have matched that, uh, even voted to kick anything into the pot. Uh, so again, I, I, I think that is, um, I think Riverton has given enough without the additional two hundred thousand. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments, concerns? All those in favor of the budget, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye. Budget is approved. The next item is a bid award, purchase of a Durapatcher. Public Works Director's report, please.
Yes, Your Honor.
This shouldn't take forty minutes, right?
We can speed through this one. As you're aware, the April seventeenth, two thousand fifteen meeting, the Fix Our Road Citizens Committee recommended the purchase of a Durapatcher using both one percent and City of Riverton funds. After consideration, um, the city council recommended at the April thirtieth council meeting purchase a Durapatcher using exclusively City of Riverton funds, uh, specifically general fund reserves from the current fiscal year, which is fourteen fifteen. Um, after that council meeting, staff advertised, um, and solicited bids for the purchase of a Durapatcher. Um, that period began May tenth, two thousand, excuse me, two thousand fifteen, and, uh, bids were received and publicly opened May twentieth, two thousand fifteen. Uh, one firm submitted a bid for the purchase of a Durapatcher. This was from Normont Equipment Company out of Great Falls, Montana. Um, the bid price they submitted was seventy thousand, one hundred dollars for a new Durapatcher. Staff recommends the city council awards the purchase of a Durapatcher to Normont Equipment Company of Great Falls, Montana, in the amount of seventy thousand, two hundred dollars. Um, again, as approved in the April thirtieth council meeting, monies from the general fund reserves will be used towards the purchase of this Durapatcher. That being said, staff is working towards utilizing unexpended, um, funds from this current year that are currently budgeted to specific line items to assist with the purchase of this Durapatcher, so all of it might not have to come from general fund reserves.
Thank you. So I would entertain a motion to, uh, award this, uh, accept this bid.
Your Honor?
Go ahead.
I would move to approve the bid award for the Durapatcher.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Mr. Larson?
Uh, there was only one bid?
Your Honor, that is correct. We advertised in the Riverton Ranger, then also on publicpurchase.com, and only received one bid for that.
Your Honor?
Fabian?
Was this the company we were renting from?
Your Honor, that is correct.
Thank you.
Unique piece of equipment?
Your Honor, I believe there are only a few vendors that sell this. Um, I noticed on public purchase, there were several who downloaded and looked at the bid package, but for some reason, one firm submitted a bid.
Mr. Larson?
One last question. Was this close to the, um, brand-new price that they had quoted us previously?
This, Your Honor, this is below the as-new price that they quoted us.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye. Motion passes. Uh, the Forest Recommendation, Pershing ADA Improvement Project Award, Public Works Director's report, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. Again, at the April seventeenth, Fix Our, Our Road Citizen Committee, um, the committee received a proposal from city staff to use the allotment of one percent funds towards the improvement of ADA ramps along Pershing Avenue between Federal Boulevard and Broadway. Um, this recommendation was unanimously, unanimously, animously approved by the Forest Committee and was subsequently brought towards the city council on April twenty-first for council recommendation. At that staff meeting, um, the city council considered and approved this recommendation. Pursuant to Wyoming State Statute fifteen dash one, dash one-one-three A, public improvements totaling less than thirty-five thousand do not require advertisement for sealed bids. Since the ADA Improvement Project along Pershing was estimated below this thirty-five thousand dollar mark, staff solicited three vendor quotes from local concrete contractors to perform this work. This is in pers, this is pursuant to City of Riverton purchasing and procurement policies. On May twelfth, thirteenth, and fifteenth, Public Works staff received the below, uh, excuse me, the following quotes for the Pershing ADA Improvement Project. The first was from Ellis Concrete from Lander, Wyoming, in the total of thirty-three thousand, three hundred and five dollars. The second was from Godern Construction of Riverton, Wyoming, at thirty-five thousand, two hundred and fourteen dollars. And the third was from DR Concrete of Riverton, Wyoming, at the amount of sixty-seven thousand dollars. Staff recommends the city council award the Pershing ADA Improvement Contract to Ellis Concrete of Lander, Wyoming, the amount of thirty-three thousand, five dollars. Uh, in regards to budget impact, the one percent fund currently has a balance of just over two and a half million dollars. City council has already approved approximately one point seven million dollars of projects. Therefore, deducting that from the two-point-five million, there's approximately eight hundred thousand dollars available one percent funds to use for the purchase, excuse me, not the purchase, but the construction of these seven ADA ramps. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. Uh, the chair would entertain a motion to approve the, uh, project award to Ellis Concrete.
Your Honor, I'll make the motion to approve the, uh, Pershing ADA Improvement Bid Award to Ellis Construction.
Second.
Been moved and seconded by Mr. Larson. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye. Motion passes. Um, Grant Resolution, Airport Improvement Program, AIP forty runway ten reconstruction localizer. Public Works Director's report, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. Um, as you are all aware, Riverton Regional Airport is currently engaged in a large-scale improvement project. Obviously, this is towards improving its runways and taxiways. Uh, the primary focus of this project is to correct that non-compliant gradient issue at the end of runway ten. But it also includes the correction, um, and improvement of the existing localizers uh, currently situated at the end of runway ten. Uh, the Federal Aviation Administration provides financial support to airports for capital improvement projects through the Airport Improvement Program, AIP, as you guys are all, already aware. Um, again, the FAA agrees to support ninety-three point seven-five percent of improvement costs through this AIP program. Subsequently, Wyoming Aeronautics and the city of Riverton cover the remaining improvement costs at three point seven-five percent and two point five percent respectively. Again, this project has already been bid and awarded and is underway at this time. Uh, this reconstruction project, um, will be supported by two AIP grants. The current staff report and this resolution deals with the first AIP grant. This grant is number three dash five six, dash zero zero two four, dash zero four zero, dash two zero one five. And specifically deals with the removal and replacement of the localizers associated with the end of runway ten. The city of Riverton is still waiting, um, for the federal government to supply the second grant offer and agreement for this project. Have communicated that they expect that to be issued very soon. As part of administering this grant, the city of Riverton is required to adopt a resolution in support of this AIP grant. This is what this staff report is centering on. As a result, city, se, excuse me, city staff recommends the city council approves Resolution thirteen eighteen to support the execution of the Airport Improvement Grant that was just referenced previously. Thank you.
Thank you. The chair would entertain a motion to adopt Resolution thirteen eighteen.
Your Honor, I would move to adopt Resolution thirteen eighteen.
Second.
Thank you. Seconded by Mr. Martinez. Any discussion? Question, sir? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Council Committee Reports and Council Members Roundtable. Ms. Jibbin, do you wanna start?
I don't have anything at this time.
Okay. Mr. Larson?
I have nothing, sir.
Mr. Martinez?
I'm in the same boat. I don't have anything this time.
Uh-huh. All right. It's been a long time since anything's happened, right? Okay, so, Ms. Fabian?
I have nothing to add.
Nothing. Mr. Canaan?
That was bad.
Whoa. Okay, city administrators report.
Yes, Your Honor. Um, for the people going to the WHAM, we've gotta vote on this, this delegate thing that we have to do every time before WHAM, so this is the official voting delegate. Typically, it's used by the mayor, um, and then we need an alternate. And so that they go to the WHAM conference and the things that come up and new laws and bylaws, then they vote for the city of Riverton. So we need to nominate someone as the official voting delegate and then have an alternate for the people that would, will be going to, to WHAM. So I just need a motion in that sense.
Your Honor?
Ms. Fabian?
I would move to nominate you as the voting delegate for WHAM convention. I would move to nominate you as the voting delegate for WHAM convention. Do we need to do both nominations?
And an al- and an alternate?
An alternate.
Um, who else is going?
Lee. Lee and...
Who else is going?
When is, sorry, when is the, when is the meeting?
Isn't it Wednesday?
Well, there's a meeting Wednesday afternoon, I think, and then we've got another something Saturday morning.
Saturday morning, yeah.
Okay, so I can't serve which, so I would, I would nominate Lee as the alternate.
Okay.
I'll look for that.
Okay, it's been moved that, and... Is there a second?
Yeah.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that, that, uh, mayor is the voting delegate and Mr. Martinez is the alternate for the WHAM convention in Cheyenne. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Okay?
Also, um, our work session next week's going to be on the three-quarter street improvement that we've, we talked about some time ago. Um, I do want to make sure that we have a quorum. A, a few of you have mentioned that you may not be here next week, so if you're not going to be here next week, let me know, so we make sure that we have a quorum to meet. So, we don't have to do that now. You can just send me an email or...
Okay.
And then the final thing is, uh, we've got the skate park coming up rather quickly. Uh, there's going to be some sod that's going to be stripped off of there, and what we're, we're going to do is, uh, kind of open that up to the public. We're going to strip those sections off, and I think it's going to happen like on Thursday. And so on Friday, people can come, first come, first served, and, and take what they need.
Is that going to be palleted or rolled?
Your Honor, that, that's going to be on pallets. Plan is to strip it Thursday. We're going to try and repurpose as much as we can in our own parks, and then we're going to pallet the rest, put it over in the parking lot of City Park, and make it available to anyone in the public who needs some sod for their yard and put it to good use.
That's it, that's it, Your Honor.
That's it? Is there a, there's a, um, when, when is the, is there an official groundbreaking?
June thirteenth, Saturday the thirteenth.
Thirteenth? Okay, and so that's while we're at WHAM? So, so who's going to handle that? Somebody from the city? You're coming back for that? Terrific. Okay.
Council president.
Okay. All right. That's terrific. That's, that's great. Okay? Okay, I didn't want, I didn't want us to ignore that and, or we're all gone. I, when, when Matt mentioned that to me the other day, I said, oh, I wondered how we were going to handle that. Okay? Um, and that's it? And now we're down to the mayor's comments. Okay, so I got an invitation today from the Wind River Hotel and Casino, uh, for, uh, their grand opening of the Buffalo Restaurant, uh, on June the twelfth. Okay? And we'll be going to WHAM. Okay? And, uh, but they would like somebody from the city of Riverton to be there and, and, uh, be represented and, and, uh, welcome them. And so, uh, I've got a couple of tickets for, I can get a couple of tickets here for dinner. So, um...
Your Honor, I think the only two people left we got is Martin and Kyle.
What time is it on a Friday, correct? Uh, it's, well... It says festivities start at ten AM and sell, come celebrate and have a good time with us. And, um, and then entertainment, Kip Ataway Dinner and Show at seven PM, June the twelfth and thirteenth. If you'd like complimentary tickets, please contact the hostess, and I can fix you up with that. Fridays? You work Fridays? So this would be seven PM? Thought you said it was at ten. Well, ten AM is what they're, I mean, they're, they're kicking this thing off. It's going to be an all-day party, but the, the dinner and, uh, the dinner and show is at seven o'clock. Would you do that? Great. I'll pass this to you, and, um, uh, we just need to, uh, it looks like we need to contact the casino to actually get the tickets. There's no tickets in here. Okay? But, but, um...
We can take care of that.
Who is... Why have I forgotten her name?
Yeah, I'm, I'm spacing it too.
Okay, all right. You know who I'm talking about, though. Jackie?
Jackie.
Yeah, Jackie Dorothy. Okay, thank you. And, uh, so at any rate, she passed that to me and said, give me a call, and we'll get the tickets to whoever's going. Okay? All right, so you'll take care of that? Thank you. Okay? The other thing I want to talk about is, oh, I haven't talked about weeds for at least a year. Okay? And, and, uh, you know, I, I used to talk about weeds every day of my life virtually, and, uh, and today I've graduated to the point where the only weeds I really worry about a whole lot are the ones on my own place. But as I drive around the city of Riverton, I have noticed two things. First, I've noticed that there are a lot of people who are very aggressively mowing and chopping and cutting and tr- trimming their places up and trying to recover from all this rain and moisture that we've had. And I also see that there's some places that need some attention. And, and, um, I just, if our community is going to look nice, I can tell you that we're going to have to have everybody's cooperation and inspiration and love for Riverton and want to have Riverton look nice. And to do that, we've got to pay attention to the grasses growing out of the cracks in the sidewalk in front of our place. We've got to pay attention to the, the weeds in the alley, and we've got to talk, we've, we've got, we've got a lot of work to do in Riverton. With all this rain, with all, and I saw the first mosquito today, with all this, with all this rain, we are going to have plenty of weeds. We've got lots of moisture in the ground. You know, the mustard this year is, is, uh, just doing fine. It must be two foot tall, maybe a little more right now, and, and starting to turn yellow, and right behind that is going to be tumble mustard, which is going to get four feet tall. And we, we, and the cosha will be five feet tall because there's enough moisture in the ground right now, if it never rained another drop, that all of those weeds are well made. So we really do need to get busy on that, and, you know, and here I am as mayor, uh, but I, you know, when I left the weed and pests, they did not give me a frontal lobotomy. So I know, I know a lot about this, and, and if people have questions, I'd be free, I, I'm happy to talk about weeds with anybody. And so I, I appreciate those that have already taken the initiative and gotten busy on it, and, uh, appreciate those who are, are waiting for one more sunny day and, uh, and hope that we can make Riverton look really pretty. I, you know, probably the, the place that most people coming into town are going to see is going to be on federal and main. So appreciate anybody that will, will, uh, take care of their yards on those showcase streets. Thank you.
Your Honor?
Mr. Larson?
The moisture in the ground is so much that my weed whacker needed a vacation from the dirt buildup on the rollers and the wheels. It was unbulld.
This is just, this is, this is really an extraordinary amount of moisture, and it's come at a time when the weeds were ready to take advantage of it. And so, uh, we really do have terrific vegetation. I know, I, my place, I spent the day with a brand-new, we bought a brand-new weed eater. I thought, man, that is going to be the, that's going to be the, in my hand that holds the controls, you know, and keeps that, you know, throttle open, is, I can't quit shaking. It's still vibrating from that. And so I, you know, I know that there is some sacrifice involved in, in taking care of your weeds, and I appreciate everything that we do in that direction. Um, and so, uh, with that, um, I don't guess we'd need any kind of an executive session, and I would entertain a motion for adjournment.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Been moved and seconded that we adjourn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. We are adjourned.